Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 27th City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, can I have your roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Odean.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we'll have the approval of the minutes from the March 13th, the regular meeting and the closed session minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Gagne.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,178,657.25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience that has something they'd like to say, now would be the time. Okay, move on. Uh, first thing we're gonna do, we're gonna have a couple presentations. Our first one's gonna be from Chief Goran Young, who'll be presenting Officer Latsey with the, uh, with the Officer of the Year. Yeah, come on up, Greg. You can't, you can't present it to me if you're not up here. Perfect.
Okay, Greg, um, if you want to introduce, I do notice that somehow a lot of your family members got here and other members, so if you'd like to at least introduce your family, if you want to.
My wife is in the bathroom, and my son and his wife, and my sister-in-law.
Thank you. Um, we're very proud to honor Officer Greg Latsey tonight. Um, he's our Department's second annual Officer of the Year recipient. Um, as you can see, the large turnout from our department means a lot to us, and in terms of why he's Officer of the Year. And he was voted unanimously by our department to be Officer of the Year. Officer Latsey has worked forty years? Forty-two years as a law enforcement officer, and he's going strong. Um, prior to this, you were with, I believe, El Tuna Police Department. Um, he embodies our mission statement, and it's just quite an honor, um, in terms of, he protects with courage, and he also serves with compassion, and that's on a nightly basis that, that he does this. Um, even if something needs to be told to the chief, um, by all means, Officer Latsey is not afraid to, to share his words of encouragement, and then sometimes even a window scraper and ice shoveler with the chief. So, he's a leader within our department, uh, he mentors other officers, he, he imparts his experience and his wisdom. Um, he's not only adamant supporter of officers and their families, but he's also, um, an officer that took it upon himself to re, to remember those officers that lost their lives in, um, in this line of work, especially regionally, and he created an officer memorial within our department, um, which says a lot about his character and, and who he is. Uh, he also has a strong connection within the community, and he also dedicates many hours given back to the community, and, and he does this without any fanfare. So, I'd like to present Officer Latsey with the plaque for the 2017 Officer of the Year. Also have a certificate, just honoring this, this year, for your great year wise, and also for your uniform, the red ones, and also the uniform. So, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Greg, Greg. Hey, Greg. One more thing, can you come up here so I can shake your hand? I can't do stairs right now, sorry. I just wanted to shake your hand and tell you how much we appreciate everything you do for us.
Maybe I will just add to the picture, too.
Right.
Never turned down a picture in my life.
Oh, you're fine. Okay. Well, this might be hard, but we're gonna recognize somebody after. This will be a tough one on you, Terry, sorry. It's a tough act to follow. But we'd like to, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Terry Kuzlik, who's gonna be retiring on April 6th. Terry has been here with almost thirty-three, thirty-three years with the Public Works Department. He joined the city in June of 1985, I think he was only five then, and has served in several different roles within Public Works, from maintenance to lead to superintendent. Terry is probably best regarded for his leadership in our snow maintenance program. His work over the past fifteen years has resulted in numerous awards. Terry, you can stand up. Come on! Awards and recognition, and now culminates in a national award from the American Public Works Association, which will be presented in May in Indianapolis. In retirement, Terry looks forward to continuing the well-regarded dog kennel and boarding business that he assists his wife Sandy with, as well as spending more time farming. He also plans to spoil his two granddaughters more. We'd like to wish Terry the best in his retirement and hope that the council and staff will be able to join us, and anybody else, at his retirement party planned for, uh, Friday, April 6th, right here at City Hall. Terry can't tell you enough how much we greatly appreciate everything you've done for us.
You're welcome.
It's been wonderful having you here. Can you kind of up here so I can shake your hand? Thanks, Terry. Okay, we've got one more. Last but not least, Susan Reese has been named Volunteer of the Year through the city. We started doing this last year, and this year we're honoring Susan Reese for all that she has done for the city throughout the years. And Amy's gonna give a little presentation for us.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. National Volunteer Week is April 15th through the 21st this year, and it is our opportunity to celebrate the impact of volunteer service on our communities. Their stories serve to inspire, inspire others who take action and discover their collective power to unite in making a difference. This Signature Week is about honoring the impact of change makers in our community. This year, the, the city would like to honor Susan Reese for her time, service, and dedication to the city of River Falls. Susan is currently the Park and Recreation Board Chairperson, and through that role is helping to shape the future of major renovations at Glen Park. Susan has touched our community in so many ways, I'll just mention a few. She currently participates on the Park Board Plan Commission and is a member of the Kenny Corridor Committee. She's led the city's American Bloom Award. She has planted and maintained gardens along the White Pathway. She was on the review board for the downtown design standards. She's provided assistance to Leadership River Falls. She's an active member of the St. Creve Valley Master Gardener Association, and the list goes on. I'm sure I've missed some. Susan's passion for ensuring the continued use and preservation of the city's parks and natural spaces is infectious. Park Board Member Patricia LaRue put it this way, "Although Susan is a good six inches shorter than me, I always seem to look up to her." Susan exhibits a passion and love for this city that is surpassed by none. Whether she is recounting her efforts on the River Falls Bloom Committee, helping construct a million-dollar Glen Park Pavilion, or admonishing me for feeding the ducks on Lake George, Susan says it with a smile, and what can you do but smile back and follow her lead. Buddy Lucero, Community Development Director for the city, stated that Susan's leadership and vision has enhanced our life and parks and the beauty of our community. So, Susan, this evening, we thank you for the impact that you've had and continue to make on the city of River Falls. And I'll just mention for everyone here, after council, um, we'll have a small get-together over in the training room for both Officer Latsey and for Susan. If you'd like to join us, please do so.
Okay. Again, we greatly appreciate everything everybody's done. Um, next we're gonna go on to a winter snowballing presentation for Mike Stifter and Terry Kuzlik.
Please do.
Yeah, it's hard to top the, the recognition, uh, you know, and I think you're two, two public servants, seventy-five years, if my math is correct, between the two of them, very impressive. So, again, congratulations to Officer Latsey as well as Terry in that regard, and certainly one of our most outstanding community servants in terms of Susan Reese. So, hard to top it, but Terry and I will try to get through this here in the next ten minutes or so. I know we have a busy evening, so, um, wanna thank the council in particular for the opportunity to present. Terry has mentioned this, we've usually done this a couple, every couple of years, typically in the fall, we'd blame the ongoing snow and cold and the fact that we're doing this here in the end of March, but worked great by which to do the recognition here prior to Terry's retirement. Um, wanna extend a couple of things to, not only again to Terry's leadership, we'll talk about that toward the end of the presentation, but Reed Ronsky also, his work with Public Works over the years, especially on the GIS information, which has really helped us optimize our snow routes and things like that. And then council, you guys have been fantastic, not only in supporting our operation in that regard, and it's not as much even the resources, which have been notable for this past year, but just the political will to support the program processes we have in place, because as a community, we don't have a bare pavement policy, but, um, it's something, and we'll talk about that, that balancing of the liability aspects, budget, resources, and things that go with it. So, as you can see on the screen, every storm is unique. Um, you know, this week was a good example, Sunday night, Monday, we received a call from the police department to come in, um, middle of the night, you know, snow and temperatures, not sure what they're going to do, but again, a little bit slick conditions, and so staff that responded based on that phone call. Again, whether the precipitation is coming as rain, sleet, or snow, temperatures falling, temperatures rising, um, and a big thing as we focus on, too, is just pavement temperature itself, and the chemical and the process we're going to employ, um, in that regard. Um, Terry, I should mention, too, is, is here, he's conducted this before, he, he's just kinda keeping me in check here tonight. He'll chime in if I miss or misstate anything in that regard, but, uh, he's let me run with this a bit here. Um, balance, this is one of the things I had talked about in terms of the public safety elements. Um, again, our police department's very key in keep us in tune in that, is being the eyes and ears out there, especially during the night itself. Cost, budget, resources, the environmental impacts, these are increasingly becoming a concern, especially chlorides in the environment, and we'll talk about that as we go, and then just public expectations as to what we maintain for our streets and walks. Winter maintenance goals, we want to capture some of these, these go back to the balance I just talked about in terms of the sustainable operations, safe travel, mechanical removal, you know, with our plow trucks, that's always the most effective. It's why we respond the way we do, um, with our operation, oftentimes at midnight, if not again running routes throughout the night. Chemical usage, big part of our process, but again, we try to keep those to a minimum. So, again, less salt, meaning less chlorides in the environment, um, in terms of operations, trying to reduce that third or fourth day of operation, policies and procedure, as you look at throughout, and then again, just maintaining of the equipment, um, that we have, and then being mindful and responsible for future growth of the city. Um, couple of the processes we use, you often will see anti-icing versus pre-wetting, I have a different slide, or we have a different slide on pre-wetting, but anti-icing, and, and we have up before you the route, uh, that we use and employ, um, the process for, in terms, and you've seen the little white strips down the pavement itself. Again, this is very temperature dependent, um, fifteen to twenty degrees, temperatures holding steady or rising, um, is where we're gonna have the most impact. Cold weather, like we had in late December, January, we didn't do a lot of anti-icing, it's just not as effective. But again, the key with this is that it helps prevent the bonding of the snow to the pavement, um, itself, and then greatly reduces our dependence on rock salt or the salt product that we use. Our salt storage and use, Terry received one of the first awards we received nationally, it was a couple of years ago, and this was just for our salt storage program itself, and so again, you can kinda see what I had mentioned in regards to pavement temperatures, um, in the process for it, in our storage container, which is out at Public Works. Crews available, and, uh, it's important for me not only to recognize our staff and the work, but it's also our utility staff, um, that we, uh, that we work with, um, folks like Dan Trickle, and Logan, and Luke, and others from Electric and Water are really key to our operation. Um, our contracted vendors, Mark Larson and his staff with Burmark, are critical, especially for our downtown operation, and then John Linehan and his staff with our shoveling, a lot of our maintenance around city buildings, and then other city staff. Again, our police department is very key for us, not only again in the policy, but just being the eyes and ears and the communication, especially during the night, um, a big aspect for us. Our customer service staff at the front counters, taking the phone calls, um, being able to report back to our staff, and then communication staff, folks like Mary Zimmerman, maintaining our website, Facebook messaging and things that we put out there. She is very key throughout the process for us, so it really is a team effort, um, in that regard. Equipment available, um, this I think is up to date, uh, with everything we have, uh, to date. Again, this includes a lot of our operation. Um, when I mentioned resources provided, you all will remember just in the last year approval for a new plow truck, which has some of our latest in terms of technology, um, the front-end loader, and then also our brine maker, all have been added to our overall equipment for the year in addition to the equipment we've had, and then our contracted services, um, especially for the hauling operation through Burmark. Pre-wetting, I had mentioned anti-icing, pre-wetting, and this is what's done at the spinner itself in that regard, applying a liquid, um, oftentimes a salt brine itself to the salt, just providing better adherence, you know, so it's not bouncing once it hits the pavement, going to the curbs and not having any impact. Try to keep it, um, in the center of the, the road itself and have it migrate from there from traffic, which again, reduces our dependence on the rock salt itself. This, an all-too-familiar sight, especially this winter itself, in terms of a snowstorm, and again, what a response looks like in that regard, and so we talk about kind of our priorities as we attack any given storm. Um, levels of service, and this is where I talk about a little bit the, the political will, um, from your standpoint, and that as a community, we don't maintain a bare road policy throughout the city. Um, our main routes, we pay a special attention to, priority route, uh, ones and twos, um, but beyond that, as we get into our residential areas itself, um, we try to maintain within three blocks from any one residence, a bare pavement type area, or again, a wheel track type area, but again, it's not uncommon in a neighborhood, a cul-de-sac, to see a snow-covered area in that regard. Um, and so you'll see these varying levels, um, throughout the city. Priorities, again, mindful of traffic volume, so again, our priority routes, emergency routes, um, our key areas for us, steep hills, we don't have a lot in the community, but we do have some, and so being mindful of that, schools, and then our businesses, and then again, what I had just mentioned here in terms of the plowed road access within three blocks, and we gave this as an example, the Rocky Branch area itself, where you can kind of see our high priority being in red, or medium, and kind of more the gold or orange, and then green to blue in terms of the lowest, again, being more of an outline area or cul-de-sac area itself. Um, snow blowing and hauling, just a quick kind of highlight of the equipment. Again, this is our front-end loader with our newest blower, which was added two years ago, um, this second year actually in operation. Um, bit of a photo of our snow hauling operation, again, with, uh, Mark Larson's truck there in use. Our grader, our loader, our tractor operation, again, the Kubota in the upper right-hand corner is what's often used, again, usually with our utility crew, Logan or Dan might be in this, Terry has been in this throughout the winter, um, used, uh, kind of for its mobility, oftentimes in our cul-de-sacs, other outline areas. Grader gets a lot of our downtown area, Charles Larson is the one we typically have in it, and then again, our front-end loader with, uh, wing and a plow. Our five city trucks, um, that we have, again, we'd say, and we'll end with that on the final slide, we're probably about on the cusp of a sixth plow possibly being needed, so as we look at new equipment, um, through our CIP process, we're kinda looking at a way to kind of optimize that, look at a vehicle that would serve us for twelve months out of the year versus just a snow season, so it's kind of a, a heads-up to be watching for that. Pickup, um, typically three of them with just front plows, these run a lot of times our alleys and trails and other areas like that, again, largely because of their mobility. Um, brooms and shovels, um, you'll see this with our bobcat, and then oftentimes what Irv or Nate or staff will be out on our trails, walks, downtown area. Uh, the perfect storm, this is something Reed, again, a few years ago, had put together in terms of the perfect four-inch storm, not all come, um, this year, though, I would say of probably the twenty-five, thirty snow events we've had, um, most have been probably of that three to four inch variety. Um, I think our largest was a ten-inch storm to date. Uh, but this is again, how Terry typically, working with the staff, approaches it, um, in that regard, in that we'll oftentimes kind of prepare, trucks and things are ready to go, um, by late afternoon. We oftentimes, if the snow is here throughout the day, late afternoon, we'll kind of run priority routes throughout the evening, and then again, um, let staff know to expect probably a midnight start, and, uh, have everything kind of ready to go at that point. And then as we kind of go through, you can kind of see how through the first night from midnight where we get started, uh, oftentimes with again, the grader downtown, two pickups running alleys, the plows beginning their routes, John Linehan and our shovellers downtown, as well as the broom running, um, 1:00 AM, um, as we start to look at, again, here's where our police department comes in, um, very critical to the odd even, um, our policies regarding it, and then the snow hauling operation starts with, uh, Burmark. Um, 3:00 AM, um, again, this is where we'd be ticketing, towing, if we've had to do that. Again, this year, Terry, of how many times we've had to?
Not a lot of cars.
Tow? I was gonna say, very few cars that we've had to tow throughout this year, and again, police department, uh, their discernment, discretion around that, as well as with our staff, they're pretty spot-on, so we're very mindful of, of kind of the outcry that can create. Um, 4:00 AM, as we're again now four hours into the operation where we're starting, do note that, um, one of our operators typically will come in, usually it's Nate Cruz, who will come in at 4:00 AM. Reason for that, then, is he's the one that will stay on after, um, as we'll show in the next slide or two. We're usually wrapping up by eight, nine o'clock. Again, with that eight hours now in, minimizing any need for overtime going into the day, but this person who's now come in is then able to respond throughout that day, um, now until about noon or early afternoon, to respond to any kind of follow-up calls we have, um, throughout the city, um, in that regard, versus having to call in a staff member who just went home from working all night. Um, 6:00 AM itself, as we're kind of starting to wrap up at this time, moving to some of the other outline areas off of the downtown itself, South Main, North Main, Winter Street, um, and then again, 8:00 AM, where we're hopefully just about wrapped up, I think, other than really that big storm we had earlier this year, by 8:00, 8:30, we're typically finishing up, um, from the night before, unless again, it's kind of a two-day event. This is now the second night, possibly a third night. We add at the third night, it's rare, I can't, well, late storm, yeah, we had a very late storm here of a couple of weeks ago, where it was kind of a Saturday, a Sunday, a Monday, um, where we did have three, just because largely the duration of it. So, this isn't unusual, but I would say it's been more of a rarity, where we do really try to stick to two nights, so just kind of a quick rundown of what that night might look like, um, in that regard. And we want to end with this, uh, slide, more so, again, some of the outreach efforts, again, Terry and others that have established this, Reed, our two annual fall meetings, we do a lot to prepare, um, this meeting, or these meetings are typically with local communities, um, both on the Minnesota-Wisconsin side, Hudson, Prescott, uh, New Richmond, Red Wing, Hastings, others like that. Our Public Works Awareness Week, this will be the third year now that we've done that, this is with all second graders in the community, um, and then Leadership River Falls, um, the program that others had started with our eighth graders, um, we've had a chance to present and kind of highlight things for them. Recent recognition, again, we highlighted, or the mayor highlighted, Terry's leadership in this, and that's really what led to our APWA award that we're gonna be going down to. That's a national award, um, for our snow maintenance, um, I think only the second community in Wisconsin to receive that, um, only one of a handful in the whole Upper Midwest, Minnesota, Wisconsin in particular, to have received that, and then Freshwater Society, this was the recent article in the paper of about two months ago where we had received that. That's largely for our environmental efforts, the chloride usage, um, and the decline of that, that we've been able to do, um, given the increased attention. Um, we feature here our brine maker, this again was one of the purchases we made this year, um, the slurry application is what's on the newest truck, um, and we use that, which again, lowers our dependence on, uh, the salt itself. And then some of the things in partnerships, we talked about, the National Weather Service, we've used them now for some of our training and other efforts, um, and, uh, we take part as a weather ambassador in their weather-ready, um, weather initiative. Um, with that opening slide, as you can see, you know, we're positioned pretty uniquely as a community, being right outside of the Twin Cities, so we do benefit from really outstanding weather forecasting, um, in that regard, which helps us with our entire operation. And then future equipment and future routes, you know, every year, we evaluate, actually, we've made probably three revisions to our plow map just throughout this year already. Um, we're evaluating it now more so for next year, hoping we don't have to use it again this year, uh, but we'll see what the weather holds for us in the next week or two. Uh, but again, evaluating what we need now as we go through the CIP process for, uh, future equipment, as we look at future development, especially as we look at kind of the north and east sides of the community. So, with that, Terry, did I miss anything at all?
No.
Anything you'd want to, uh?
I think it is pretty good.
Jeff, he was the pretty face tonight, and again, if I went off the rails, he was going to put me back on, so, but, uh, with that said, any questions you might have?
I, Mike, I have a question. How many miles, um, do we plow in streets, alleys, parks, and walkways? What's the breakdown of all of that?
We're gonna look at, uh, Reed here myself, I was gonna say, we did this evaluation.
Exact, exact measurements.
Yeah, you know, we're-
Sixty miles of streets, we have thirteen of alley, I, you know, I-
It's just, I never counted.
It's real close.
But I don't keep them up here anymore.
I was gonna say, a hundred and twenty lane miles, but sixty road miles, a hundred and twenty lane miles to a sixty miles of road, but alleys, we think probably ten to fifteen miles of, um, in that regard. Trails, um, and they're ever increasing, you know, we have a lot of trails. Again, those become more secondary oftentimes, too, but again, when you look at over the course of a day, two or three, a lot of miles covered, um, between, uh, you know, the equipment that you've seen.
And on the trails, like the new trail that we have down along the, the river, is that only, um, is that only a plow, or do you ever put chemicals down on that, or is that?
You know, we don't, Terry.
The only time we use a chemical, let's say we got a freezing rain and some frozen ice, and we worry about somebody slipping and falling, but rarely do we use chemicals on the trails. It's just those unique situations. We try not to, just because we're right on top of the river.
Right, right.
You know, I'd probably look at more of a sand mixer if I could, especially if the forecast was favorable, where it was gonna warm up. I would try to not run straight salts if I could help it.
Okay.
Now, what Mike does in the future-
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
I can only talk about what I would do in the past.
I don't see myself straying too much from a well-run operation in that regard. One thing, you know, we didn't mention, and is still quite commonplace, I'm, I'm almost amazed, commonplace in most communities is the use of sand. You know, we, I don't think we've used sand once this year, and in a very extreme case with again, ice, would we use sand? It's just not a very effective, uh, material, and yet, a lot of our surrounding communities, um, that's, that's something they often employ and use, and it's something we just haven't used, and largely because of the sedimentation that occurs with it, so you have again, that, that, one, the impact isn't very, uh, very good, and, um, you know, the impacts on our, our rivers, um, in this community, and so it's just something we haven't used for probably ten years.
Yeah, a good ten years, yeah.
So-
Well, I'm on a low-level street, but I, I always think you guys do a high-level job of it. It's, you guys are second to none, so thank you for your service and thank you for what you do.
It's the start of midnight that really helps us. We don't get the compaction on the roads, and then you guys have been really nice on the equipment, get us good equipment that doesn't break down, so we can stay out. I mean, I don't know, other than we hit, uh, water main break and broke a truck this year, but we had that fixed and going by midnight again, uh, when he was maintaining during that, one of the bigger storms. We don't have breakdowns, you guys give us good stuff, you give us a decent budget to allow to keep and maintain well, and that makes a huge difference for us.
Yeah. We're hoping that doesn't change either.
I, I just find it amazing when I talk to people from other towns and they complain about their service or their city service, and it's like, I've never experienced that living in River Falls, so really kudos to what you guys do, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, Mike, you mentioned that we don't have a bare pavement policy, and, and I just was wondering for, um, the public out there, can you talk about, you know, what, what do we gain out of that? What are the benefits of, of going in a different direction?
Yeah, you know, largely I'd say it's two things, and again, Terry certainly chime in. Two things that me, that to me come to mind, though, are just the resources it would take, the physical, you know, we operate lean as an organization, but do quite well. Again, we can finish most of our work within eight hours, but to try to get bare pavement citywide means throwing a lot more staff, a lot more equipment at it, and probably more so to me, maybe of even more concern, is just the chemical, you know, to do it. You know, mechanically is one way, and that again, comes from the people and the equipment to do it, uh, but then the, the chemical, the salt, and so it's just the impact on the environment in that regard. So, those two things, and it's back to that balance, you know, we try to strike that right balance between the right amount of resources, to the environmental impacts, to again, the expectations of the citizens, and we do pretty well. Again, I appreciate, um, Jeff's- Again, I appreciate Jeff's comment, but you know, there are our citizens who'll take us to task occasionally, you know, Facebook, but they're minimal. You know, I, I can think within a hand or two of how many comments Terry or I have received throughout the year, but it's usually an educational opportunity at that point, you know, where we follow up and it's just, you know, kind of a clarification because it's a little counterintuitive as to why we don't have it in all areas. And once you kind of lay out the resources it would take from a taxpayer standpoint to again, that environmental impact, it usually makes, makes sense. It resonates with them.
Well, I agree with Jeff. I think you strike a really good balance and thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
I'd like to send kudos as well to Terry, just on that same balance, I got a couple, a call from a customer of the utility saying that there was ice and water building up at the end of their driveway because we're not going curb to curb and, you know, and that was a kind of a concern of mine is, okay, these people can't get into their driveway because it's such a low spot and, you know, and it was a great education from Terry and his staff on why we don't go curb to curb and the extra of resources and breaking curbs and how much extra that's going to cost the, the tax base and, and the city of River Falls if we're scraping up against curbs and essentially breaking down your, your plows and your equipment as well from rubbing up against curbs and breaking that. I, I think it's a, a great educational tool that you guys have.
We try to go as full with as we can early this season, but once we get enough snow like we did this year, we push it back and it falls back on the street. And if we try to push it back too hard, we take out all the mailboxes. So we got to try to do that balance.
Yeah, and I, I think you did a great job in educating myself.
Because we've got a few chunks of stuff off and you know, when the drivers are driving past mailboxes for eight hours, they're going to get one or two. You know, but most of them were just poor installations or just old mailboxes. I think we probably struck, physically struck maybe five mailboxes all winter. It's more of a snow load and they were just, you know, old rotten posts or rotten metal posts or wood ones, you know, it was really hard for you to get within a couple inches of them.
Yeah, you guys do, you guys do a great job.
And consistently, and that's really a kudos to them.
And I don't know, not to invite anybody out at midnight, one o'clock to ride around in a truck, but if, kind of council, it's been very key for me to have, you know, rode along with our plow drivers to see again, what they're dealing with in the course of a night with the weather, the vehicles, all the traffic and things out there. It's pretty eye-opening, but that offer is always out there, you know, at some point. Again, I'm hoping that's not this year anymore, maybe in the fall, winter, but if in the future that's of interest, just let us know. Anybody else? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything. Okay, next move on to have another presentation of the Park and Rec Board and then our Recreation Coordinator Cindy Dankie and our Park Board Chairman Susan Reese will give us a little presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having us tonight. Our Activity Guide, Spring, Summer came out last Monday, so a week ago Monday, and during that time, we've got 175 programs. And during those seven days, we've had over 1,200 individuals sign up for the different classes and programs and brought in roughly about $33,000 in revenue thus far. So it's been a good seven days. Some of the things that we've talked about before is the Hoffman Park and I just want to remind everybody that the snow's not gone from there yet, hopefully soon. So I'm glad that these guys aren't going to plan to plow anymore because I'm ready for spring and summer to come. But we have 15 sites for the camping and that's with electricity. We are putting in three tent sites behind in some of the green space to kind of combat that because out of the 33 weeks we were open last year, 23 of them, 15 of those sites were full at, at that time. So it was amazing on how much and it just shows whether, you know, it's, it's a need for the community or for the community's relatives as they're coming in. Some of the programs we do surprises me sometimes. So we decided because it's nice and summer and they had those nice basketball courts over by Greenwood, we thought we'd do a coed basketball, thinking that, oh, we, you know, it probably, it'll probably go okay. We filled that class last year and this year and actually, and actually had to offer an off, off one. So we're doing two one-week periods where they can do that coed basketball. You'd think people would just want to do basketball in the wintertime, but it's not true. Plus it is nice to be able to do something outdoors. It's not always about the game. We have about 480 participants in our T-ball up through basketball and that's usually like pre-kind, or three years old, all the way up to eighth grade is the ones that we take in the city. And here's some kids just having fun. And if Greg Lotzi was here, I would say he actually volunteered to be a softball umpire for me when I go begging to staff and whoever that I needed covered for tonight. So he also did that for the community. But you know, it's, it's one of our bigger programs. Some of them that aren't so big sometimes is, this is a princess camp, but it's always nice to be able to reach out to the community and we had the River Falls Days Ambassador's queen come in and spend some time with them. And I got to tell you, those little girls just love it, those types of things. Some of the other things that we do, we do a life on the Kinney Camp. You know, it, sometimes it's always not about sports, sometimes it's about education within the camps. And then we're nice enough to get the volunteers. So Susan Reese volunteered for this camp. Also the Historic Society came in and, you know, gave some presentations. It wasn't a big filled class, but I got to say, the children and the parents that came really enjoyed the things that we did during those three days. We also reached out, well, to the Sportsman's Club. 4H does a, a nice, to their kids with archery, pistol, shotgun, and we opened that up and put it within our booklet. The Sportsman's Club people are nice enough to help volunteer. This is also with the 4H, but I got it, once Hunger Games came out, archery just took off. And you know, that's just one line, I think of kids. So I think there's 20 that can get in a line going for, I don't know, five different targets. So, but it's, it's just a thing to be, you know, seen out there and it, it also lets the community know what else is out there that people can actually do as an adults or as children. Our swimming lessons is always one of our biggest ones. We had 775 in it last year. You know, it's an old pool. I think Susan is going to give you a report on how old. It's, it's one of the things that, you know, sometimes they say it's held together by pins and needles and it is because of how old it is, but it's nice that our public works staff takes the care and time into it that they do to be able to have that outdoor pool. We go for grants every year. This was one of them that we got last year was the yoga in the park. We were lucky enough to get awarded that from Alina again this year, so we'll be offering that again this year in the park. It's just a different entity, obviously there's yoga all year long, but this is nice to just be able to have it out in the park. Another one that we did was a bicycling grant where we took people out on the different routes and all those bike routes are on the website, on the front page of the, or on the website that people can find that route and be able to take it. So it's always nice and nice information. Lucky enough to have a great, work for a great city, so we work with the library, we work with the police department, putting together some of these camps. We have 22 parks with 462 acres. That's a lot of acres for the public works staff to take care of. We've got paved and trailed of 34.2 miles, but we think of that, that they perhaps have to plow as like 16 miles of, 16 miles of the paved trails. I'm going to wait for questions and I'm going to turn it over to our new volunteer of the year. How cool is that to say? Susan Reese and our Park Board Chairman, and she's going to talk about the Park Board.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the honor. Cindy Sostelth and Amy. Let's see, we have here, the Park Board members. On the back row is Dennis Zilski, Jim Norgren, Hal Watson and Patricia LaRue. In the front, Brandon Doberton, Brenda Gulkey and myself. The Kinney Connect Trail this year was the completion of the trail from the Maple Street to Division Street. And this added to the path that last year finished around Lake George. And one of the best things about this trail is that it's all handicapped accessible. So that's nice. Glen Park. Oh, that's the trail, sorry. Glen Park renovations will be underway soon and work on the Storm Shelter Event Building is scheduled to begin this fall. But I'll read, leave those descriptions to Reed Bronski. He'll talk to you about that project in the near future. A reminder that this whole Glen Park project was initiated by a need to improve the safety of the park by reducing conflicts between pedestrian and cyclists with vehicles and to provide additional and organized parking. The pool is now 81 years old and while it's not a part of the Glen Park renovation plan, it is never off the minds of the Park Board and we hold our breath, but it will be a problem to be solved in the future and planning ahead would be wise. Oh, how do I go back Cindy? The other side? Well, you know what? It was kayaking. Y'all saw it. That's okay. It doesn't matter. It's just a picture of kayaking. Oh, thank you. It's not one of my forte's. Kayaking has become a problem over the years at Glen Park and the main launch for kayaking is off Park Street and it's caused a lot of pressure to that neighborhood. And we're hoping that the Kinney Connect Corridor Committee will be planning a new site for the launch and that should take some of the pressure off the Glen Park neighborhood. When we had to cut some of our projects in the Glen Park plan, kayaking was one of them we eliminated. Hoffman Park. The Triangels Playground has always been popular from the very start and the First National Bank Stadium is also a popular attraction and has made a major impact on this park. The agreement with the Baseball Council included additional parking and restrooms and both are needed, but I, I don't know the status, the status of those at this time. At a recent candidate's, that shows the parking even when the stadium is not in use. So it's crowded. At a recent candidate's forum, I heard more than one mention of the DOT's addition of the jug handle off Highway 35 at Division Street. And I believe this would trigger the need to reposition the entrance to Hoffman Park. And of course, then the dominoes fall. So one thing leads to another. Ryan De Sanctus, Ryan Nicholas De Sanctus Park. This is a big, beautiful park and is greatly underutilized due to a lack of parking and sewer. Cindy has had requests to use the schoolhouse as an event rental even without water, but she's had to turn them down. There have also been plans for a summer enrichment class to be held in the historic schoolhouse to give young students an opportunity to experience what life was like in the early days, but that hasn't worked out either. So hopefully with more private development, there will be, that will bring water and sewer to the park or closer to our park and we can complete that and make better use of it. Double F, the park site was originally planned for baseball and softball fields. Again, the, the development fell through in that area and that wasn't our fault, but now it has become the site of our new but modest dog park. Dog parks are a popular amenity today and now River Falls can say, we too have a dog park. I know it's been wished for by many. We started out on the trail and I want to close on the trail. We've all heard from experts that being in nature contributes to a sense of well-being. Thanks to the decisions of past councils, RF has two very special natural areas, right in the heart of town on the Kinney Connect Trail, the stretch commonly known as the White Pathway and the Foster Cemetery Conservancy area. To have saved them is not enough. Both of these areas require and deserve routine maintenance, not just every three to five years, but every year. We need to keep invasive species like buckthorn, garlic, mustard and others in check. Fortunately, the local prairie enthusiasts have worked for maybe 20 years to reclaim and maintain the Oak Savannah and Prairie where the Foster Cemetery sits perched over the Kinney Connect River. This is a gift the city must repay with respect and support and maybe funds at some time. As work along the Kinney Corridor progresses, special care needs to be taken to preserve these unique natural areas for current and future generations. And thank you. And does anybody have any questions for either Cindy or I?
Anybody?
I've got a question or just Cindy, maybe Cindy would be better prepared for this one, but what are we doing?
Better prepared, huh?
Well, this is, this is a more nuts and bolts question, Susan. I know you're a big picture thinker, so. What are we doing to prepare for 2019? I would assume we're starting the process now when it comes to some of these camps and the pool and the different things.
Yes, you know, certainly some of the things, you know, we've talked about that we would probably be able to utilize, you know, Hoffman or even this year, one of the camps is actually going to be at De Sanctus Park, you know, utilizing that building and getting people kind of used to that building. So I think the camps or the sports types of things are probably going to be okay. I am concerned about the swimming a little bit and, and I didn't start, think about this until the middle of the night, the other night, and it's not that I don't want the referendum to go through, but if the school referendum goes through and they do some work on the pool, I'm, I'm starting to think, well, when will they maybe do that? Well, they will maybe do that during the summertime when I would probably need it for my swimming lessons. So that's, you know, but once again, that's the, they could be doing it two years down the road and maybe there won't be an impact. But so, you know, that's a definite concern for me is, is to be able to get those swimming lessons into all the kids because right now even the high school pool, we're going to have to think of some creative way to, to get some of those pre-level, pre-level ones in there because the high school pool is, is a little bit too deep for those little ones to stand. And we found that, you know, for somebody hanging onto the side, you know, and somebody, you know, dragging them out to water doesn't work as well as them being able to put their feet on the ground and head above the water to learn those swimming lessons, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Cindy, I'd like to say something. I think, just so we all were, were, were too, but the campground over at Hoffman Park is really an unsung hero for this community. I know Beer Fry, Fry made, really pushed to have that, whatever it was, 15, 20 years ago, but when you think, well, you said 23 weeks that those sites were filled and we have for all the other weeks that there's people camping over there. You know, we have these one-day events that people come in for and then leave, but those people are staying there in the campground, spending, buying gas, buying groceries, buying everything else. Those camps are really truly an unsung hero for our community. I hope we never lose focus of what, what those, what they bring as endowers and also for community too. Because like you said, a lot of those people are people that are coming up to visit family and that realize for community to continue and communicate. So I love it and I hope you continue to champion that and make sure, and I love that you have three new tent sites there, but it is...
Yeah, I would have never thought that somebody would really present that there's no water. Well, when we started, the trees weren't very big, so there wasn't much shade, but it has really, you know, come in to be, and I get phone calls on it all winter long, like, when are you open? You know, are you guys going to be open by April 1st? I said, well, maybe last year we would have, not so sure this year, but, and our, our target gate is, date is the 15th, but of course, last year it was nice already by the middle of February. So we allowed them in a little bit earlier and to stay a little bit longer and that just helps, so.
Yeah, they're, they're great.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
A quick question. River Falls is a monarch city, monarch butterfly city. What role does the Park Board play in helping the survival of the monarch butterfly?
Well, you know, it was one that we, we kind of went for to, to get that award and, and just to be denoted on it. So we've had, we, we tried last year just having like a butterfly camp in, in hopes that we'd kind of get the kids. And then when we did the Arbor Day and then we worked with the kids, we actually had milkweed, you know, that we gave to the kids to be able to start planting the milkweed for, you know, their backyards or whatever for... know, their backyards or whatever for the butterflies. But surprisingly, I was talking to one because it's really big out in California, like everything is, but they, you know, he said, he goes, oh, I was visiting River Falls last year, and you have a lot of monarch butterflies. So I'm like, okay, thanks, you know, for that. So it's something sometimes, you know, whatever's, you know, true to your heart, and he obviously was looking for them a little bit harder than maybe I was looking for them, but, yeah.
I'd like to continue on that topic. I'm glad you brought that up. I brought up to Tony and Nate Cruz last year, the site behind Locust Street that's above the dam, so it'd be Max's backyard and Kenny Savie's backyard. It used to be my backyard when I was a pre-teen. That was filled with milkweed as a youth, and I'm sorry, but my brothers and I got rid of all that milkweed so we could have a little league baseball field. And I really proposed that we put the milkweed back in there because it was completely filled with milkweed as a youth, and there were butterflies all the time there. And now we, as a city, we mow that all the time, and I would really love to see that stretch, that, you know, two blocks or two lots, to go back to milkweed or into natural state because it's a perfect spot where we have a butterfly park.
Okay. We'll probably look into that because I've got milkweeds up in my office right now if anybody wants to plant any, so.
Lots are filled with milkweed as of, you know, four years ago, 15 years ago.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks, guys. Okay, next we will move on to the consent agenda. First, we have the acknowledgement of the following minutes. The Park and Rec Advisory Board from February 21st, the Bid Board from February 13th, the Historic Preservation Commission from February 14th, the Plant Commission from February 6th, and the Library Board from February 5th. Does anybody have to poll anything? Does anyone entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, next move on to ordinances and resolutions. It's a resolution approving the purchase agreement for 265 Mountain View Road. This resolution would approve the purchase agreement for $420,000 plus closing cost, clo, I'm sorry, plus closing cost, and we would authorize the city administrator or designate to finalize the purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the resolution approving purchase agreement for 265 Mountain View Road.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just asked for some clarification for the folks at home. What is the initial reasoning for the city council to be approving or not approving this? I mean, why are we looking to purchase this property?
One of the reasons that has been discussed is for a future public safety facility, including possibly police, fire, and EMS. There still is some interest from other companies that, you know, because it's quite a large site, it's in our TIF 11, it's possible that someone could come and request that site also, but it's primarily for public safety facilities.
Okay. You know, I'm going to be voting in favor of it, but I just wanted to bring it up to the folks at home that, you know, it was solicited for potential public safety property. We've been in talks, and we have a couple feasibility studies for police and then fire and EMS, and I couldn't think of a better place in the community that could be a multi-use public safety facility. This has been a long time coming, and I think we'd be kind of fools not to use that property for such.
I would agree with Chris on that. I think we're fortunate to have an opportunity to find a piece of land where that is and have it available for all the men and women who work for the city in the way we can, so, yeah, I'm in favor of this as well.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we go on to our administrator's report. If anybody has any questions for Julie, or Julie, if you have anything for us.
Julie, if I, go ahead, Julie. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The main thing, I guess I wanted to say is there's an election on Tuesday. We encourage everyone to come out and vote. We have in-person voting through this Friday at City Hall, Friday at 4:30, I believe, so either that or at the polls on Tuesday.
Julie, I got just a question. If you could update the council, if you would, on the RFTV situation. I know the council sort of requested staff to come back with some recommendations, and can you give us some timeframe when that's going to happen and what we should expect there?
We have not done a lot with that to date. We did lose our primary cable person, Dennis Hildreth, last week, a couple weeks ago. So all we've done to date is to move the programming from Channel 18 to Channel 16, but Mary Zimmerman, our communication manager, will be working on a survey if she hasn't already, trying to find out what people are viewing, when they're viewing it, what's important to them. And then also, we put some slides out on 16 and 18 to have people contact City Hall to let us know what they're watching. So hopefully by May, we'll have something back for the council.
Thank you. I know that I've had some interest, some citizens have approached me and asked, you know, what's going on. I think they were a little concerned that it got swept under the rug, and I reassured them that was not the case. But if you have an interest, and there was a lot of people in the audience at the time that had an interest in cable TV and the future of cable TV as provided by the city of River Falls, I urge you to participate and let us know what you're thinking, because without that, we have no direction other than, you know, to do what we've looked at before, so, thank you.
I'd like to add on to that. I really think it'd be wise for us to interject some of the senior homes and do our due diligence to make sure that we're really reaching out to folks, not just putting it in their mailer, because we all get junk mail, and we all get a bunch of stuff that does get just thrown away and overlooked because they don't think it's important. I just think it'd be a really wise idea to maybe hit them at their dinnertimes, make an announcement and kind of, you know, get them where we can actually announce, this is what we're doing, here's the survey, please look it over and tell us if you actually use the amenities that are provided by the city via cable TV. I think we need to really focus on how we can engage them and do it to the best of our abilities.
We are going to try to do that specifically because some of these people may not have other communication means, so we will do our best.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Julie.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just follow up on something Julie mentioned earlier and remind folks that polling for District 3, which used to be at the Meyer Middle School, is going to be at the Storm Shelter at Hoffman Park. And that's the Storm Shelter that's past the campground and on the right-hand side as you're going in to the park. So if you didn't vote in the primary, you might not remember that the polling place has changed for next Tuesday.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Move on to Comptroller's Report.
Okay, this is the Comptroller's Report for February 2018. General Fund revenues through the end of February were $3,41,803 and includes the February property tax settlement and the annual payment for state facilities. Expenditures for the same period were $1,259,275, or 13% of budgeted, for a net of revenues over expenditures of $1,782,528.
Okay, thanks, Diane. Okay, next, we're going to recess in a closed session per Wisconsin State statute for the following purposes. 19.85i1e deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to wit purchase or sale of property in Sterling Pond's corporate park and De Sanctus Park.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We move into closed session.
Second.
Kristy, you can have a roll call, please.
Odine.
Yes.
Donning.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session. Buddy's going to entertain us.
All right.
They are nice, and it's nice. People do a good job.
Yep, yep, yep. Thank you.